Okay, good evening, everyone. It is now six oh one. We're ready to start our regular council meeting. It is Monday, June the twenty-third. So glad to have everybody here that's here and those who are out on the live stream. At this time, we will continue further as we have our invocation and pledge of allegiance. Let us stand. Oh God, our heavenly Father, we thank you for all of the blessings in life. We thank you for this opportunity, it is privilege to gather together and do the business of the town of Pickens. Father, please guide us and direct us. Help us do what is pleasing to your sight and let us stay within your will. Father, bind us together with those cords of love that nothing and no one can separate. And Father, may we never forget of who we are and whose we are. We thank you for our counsel, for our attorney that's here today. We thank you for his wife who's been struggling health-wise. We ask that you continually hold her in the hollow of your hand. Bless all of our council members and all of our staff. Father, we thank you because we feel in our heart this, this is just the best as yet to come. We love you, we praise you, and in the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Okay, comments from Mayor. Thank y'all for being here. Oh, thank you. Thank you so much, y'all, for taking the time out to come. Again, I want to reiterate, as I said in my prayer, that I thank our council for all their long hours and dedication. I just feel like things are gonna be even better and better here in Pickens, and I thank you all for being a part of that. I don't have many comments, other than the fact that we got a lot on our plate tonight, and I'm not gonna take a lot of time. So we're gonna continue to move forward. We don't have anybody on to give comments. So there'll be no comments tonight. Now we have the administrator's report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, and everyone from the city of Pickens. If you hadn't noticed, it's hot outside, just a little bit. We have, we're participating with the county, and Jonathan Morris is here. We've opened a cooling shelter from eleven AM to five PM through this heat crisis, so that folks who need a break can go over there and get in a cool environment and have a water and those kinds of things. Also related to this heat, working with our Public Works and all of our folks working outside, we will be considering potentially having them come in earlier in the cooler hours of the day. We're gonna remain flexible with that, and if it does change any scheduled activities or garbage pickup, the timing on that, we'll make sure to communicate that through all of the channels we have available. We really are advising everyone who works outside in the city, but most importantly, our staff, to be very cautious, to hydrate, take some time in the shade, and be very careful during this very hot time, because I understand it's gonna be worse tomorrow. So we've got that. I've got an important update on the long anticipated FY 2023 audit and the forensic examination of that financial report, trying to find what was originally $157,000 in un reconciled transactions. We've had word from the CPA that's working with us. Mandy also feels very confident, and our auditors have looked at it and said pending full confirmation that they're confident that that unreconciled balance is now down to less than $20,000. That kind of unreconciled balance would not be atypical for a large organization, and it would not be a material finding in the audit, so we may be able to draw that to a close and move forward with our next audits, which I think all of us and all of the communities would be very pleased to see.
Good job, Mandy.
Yeah. So hopefully, we'll have that closed out very soon, and we can move into our commitment is this calendar year coming to be completely caught up with all of our audits, which would be a nice change of pace. And the final thing, we do have a long agenda, so I won't Terry here, but this is the last meeting that I think we'll have. We've had a lot of special meetings this month before July fourth, and I want to make sure to invite council and all of our community. We're very excited about the July fourth celebration with our fireworks, which will be July fifth at four o'clock. Please, everybody, come out. Everybody's gonna gather at the amphitheater, and the fireworks will be launched from Brucefield, so they'll be visible throughout downtown, but please come out and let's celebrate a very important birthday for our country coming up here in the next week or so. That is the end of my report. Now, if any questions from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
One question, sorry. The, can you tell us the closing date on the 178 property contract? What's the closing date on that?
It was... I might interject, Terry. The closing deadline was set for July thirty-first. I want it before July thirty-first, based on the timing letter from Reedy Land Company.
I knew, I knew the July part.
Okay, thank you.
I was gonna say July thirtieth, so that's close.
It should be July thirtieth, but, because that's thirty days after.
We don't have the contract.
Yeah. That's the first time I've heard that.
Yes, Mayor. Do we want to move the $50,000 we put in the budget for forensic due to the revelation tonight that we have found that money? Do we want to move that back out of there into...
I've had conversations with a couple of council members as we've since Friday when this came up. There is an additional $50,000 for the possibility of forensic auditing. Now, we still remain behind on twenty-four and will very closely be behind on twenty-five in this coming fiscal year. So I think it may be advisable to leave those funds there in the event that any additional issues come up as we move through these. That is entirely up to the discretion of council. If we need to come back and ask for more, we can come back and ask for more, but I think that knowing that we've been so far behind, and it is a priority with both the community, the council, the staff, and the state, because we need to comply with deadlines to get our audits in, I leave that up to council.
So can we move it into a line item? Where is it sitting now, Tim? Is it...
Account expense is the line item.
So would we put it there? Would we move it there if we wanted to just add it to our budget for continuing audits? Is that where it would stay?
Yeah, that, that, it is where it would be, and essentially, it's only there for expenditure if there are additional audit expenses.
What does that line item cover, young man? Manny?
I'm in service to some audits.
Okay.
It's kind of a sole category that's specifically targeted to that.
So do we have the final report on that audit? Is it done?
No, it's not.
Okay, so I wouldn't feel comfortable until it was done to do that?
Yeah.
Not until it's done.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to hear from the auditors.
Yeah, I know we're, we're feel comfortable and confident on that, but we don't have the final report.
I agree completely.
Right. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick question on this audit.
Yes, sir.
And Mandy, this is more directed to you, and I think, I don't remember if I asked this already, but assuming that we get the audit number down to, let's say, fifteen or twenty thousand, how do we account for that? Does that...
Please, please speak into the microphone so that...
It will be expensed.
Out to a miscellaneous account.
Okay. Is it possible to use any unused audit funds to help cover that? Is that, is that necessary, or is it just don't matter?
Well, it's expenses that the city has incurred. We just are not sure which category those funds go into, so it's not that we have additional funds available.
Just a non-accumulated expense.
Right. Right. Yeah.
So thorough. I love it. Anybody have any other questions or comments about the budget? We're getting ready to have some people talk, and we're getting ready to approve the minutes for May the nineteenth, May the twenty-first, May the twenty-eighth, May the twenty-eighth, June the fourth, June the eleventh, and June sixteenth. If they say this council doesn't get together, they're wrong. They are very wrong. I just brought to my attention before we started, which of the minutes posted here?
June sixteenth.
June the sixteenth? June the sixteenth, the special call meeting?
Yes, sir.
Before we go further, we, we just got that. Do we want to postpone approving that until the next meeting? Because everybody hasn't had a chance to look it over.
I read it and didn't find any issues with it, but I'm happy to postpone it, but I did read it.
Okay. Did everybody get a chance to look it over?
Mr. Mayor, I don't, I don't have...
You can't hold on if you haven't looked it over.
Yeah, I haven't. I was gonna say, I might, I would propose, and I'm not making a motion, but I would suggest we make a motion to postpone those minutes till the next meeting in July.
You just made the motion.
I didn't make a motion.
No, I'm just kidding.
It's an unofficial, like...
No, it's not in Roberts rules. Sorry.
Thank you, Councilman Rogers, for your...
Do him to him like you did me.
So I, unless there's other questions, I'll make the motion that we approve all minutes except for the June sixteenth minutes at this time.
So I sort of second that one.
Sort of?
Sort of.
Do you second?
Yeah, I do second.
Thank you. You don't wanna totally commit to John.
I didn't want to.
All right. It's been properly moved and seconded. Now we're ready for questions. Any questions in the comments at this point?
Do, do we know when we will see the, I mean, when we will vote on those minutes? Is that the first meeting?
Next, first, next, regular meeting.
Which would be, what, July tw- blah 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 blah, fourteenth?
Fourteenth.
Okay. We're not meeting then, are we? Are we meeting July fourteenth?
Let me just...
Yeah. Because we don't, it's not the sixteenth.
That's right.
And I, and I want to just say, I don't hold this against Donna. I ju, it's, mistakes happen.
Okay. Exactly. Thank you. She does good.
And it actually helped me to get done with my review of the minutes about thirty minutes earlier over the weekend than I would have otherwise, so I thank you.
We thank you, Donna. Okay, we're gonna put on that motion, the fourteenth? Can that be okay? It'd be postponed to the fourteenth? All in favor, raise your right hand. Just unanimous.
Mr. Mayor, let me just clarify that we just voted to approve all the minutes...
Yes.
And to move the approval of the minutes to the sixteen, to the fourteen.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, number seven, presentation regarding the city of Pickens redesigned website. You got it?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, are we not supposed to approve the minutes by date? I mean, we can't approve them all together, right? We've never done that before. Is that, is that...
I mentioned each date.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Keep me straight, man.
Yeah, okay.
I love it.
Mr. Mayor, I will mention to, to Councilman Rogers that this council recently has, has approved multiple minutes at one, in one meeting at one sitting, and I don't know where he's coming from by saying, "We've never done it before." We've done it plenty of times. Where were you? Were you, you were in the meeting?
I've been here a lot, lot longer time than you have, Mr. Junior Councilman.
But you seem to have lost track of time.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We have a very exciting new addition to our communications portfolio with an updated website, which I think we can all agree that the city of Pickens website has needed some updating for quite some time. Brian Owens has been very involved in that process and is going to give us a sneak peek at what we will be going live with in July. So what am I supposed to do? He's looking at me.
PowerPoint.
Okay, yeah, you did email me a PowerPoint, didn't you? I thought you might actually be able to do it. All right. It's hard to get good help these days.
I know.
We're all, we're all kinda heat drunk tonight.
I think the heat got us on, and the comedy's on.
I'd much rather be there than, than on the side of that.
Did you? Are you gonna make a copy of that?
Just not online yet, is it?
No, not yet.
Not yet.
July?
Where it had been for July, is that right?
Correct.
As he's looking for it, I want to commend Brian. This is a beautiful comprehensive website that I think is friendly, friendly, or user-friendly, and I thank you so much for your hard work. It means a lot. And also you, Tim.
I can't even get the presentation to come.
Well, I take it back.
It doesn't work tonight.
All right, so now it's ready. Sorry for misunderstanding who's doing what.
I need a box.
You're good.
Okay, so as Mr. Mayor mentioned, one of the big things we wanted to do with the new city of Pickens website, we wanted to have quick access navigation. If you go to our current website, it's really hard to find anything unless you know exactly where it is, so that was one of the big things. We wanted to make sure that public meeting and council information is readily available. We've got enhanced department listings, and we'll show you a lot of that as, as we're going through this today. Online payments and forms, water and utility resources, alerts and announcements, and the community event calendar. So this is what the very first top part of the website looks like. We did it so that it makes it easy to find, if you look at those silos at the bottom, that it sort of mimics the water tower, right? That's, that's the design concept. That's what we were going after. So it puts the big things that you need to get to quickly right in front of your face. So bill pay, events, things to do, forms, utilities, those are the common access things. The menu across the top where it says our city, business departments, and government. If you, you can drill down in each of those. We won't right now, but I'll show you a couple more things. We're gonna continue on down the page, and it just gives a little bit about Pickens, because this website is not only aimed at our citizens and our community, but it's also aimed at tourists and people that are thinking about moving to this area. So there we go. And at the bottom, there will be a place where we'll have the announcements. Upcoming events are in the middle and then, or on the right, and in the middle, you'll have information about city council meetings, other, other scheduled meetings that the council will be doing, and you can see the full calendar as well. And finally, at the very bottom, as you scroll, there are quick links to get to each of the primary departments. These are not completely built out yet, but as I believe the mayor said, we are shooting for July, the first week of July is what we're targeting. We'll have all this built out, but to get, this gives people quick information to get their phone number and email address for these different departments, like Parks and Recs or Public Works. We'll have finance on there, too. That's a couple of changes that we're working on now. And that footer at the bottom, there'll be, again, there's pieces down there so you can get to some other areas that you might need to look up, like the city director. And on this, this slide, all I'm showing here is where, if you hover over departments, you'll see the different departments, and I picked on administration because Tim is here, so we will pick on him. And if you click on administration, the page comes up and it talks a little bit about what we do as a city. And as you scroll down, the budgets, audits, finance, and human resources information. It doesn't look that clear on this screen, but trust me, it looks really good on the devices. And this will all work on a phone, just as well as it does on a desktop or an iPad or other type instrument like that. This, this page just talks a little bit about the government. So if we go to our government page, it gives us a brief introduction, and as you start scrolling down, we'll find our mayor, and then with quick information to be able to get to, to our mayor and then the city council. So we'll have that information as well as you keep scrolling, and I didn't show the rest of council. It was only because I didn't want to keep doing screenshots, but I thought this was, this is a screen that I think is very important, especially for our community. It's one-stop shopping for the city council minutes, agendas, and the live stream recordings. Today, you have to go several different places to see all these things, and now you'll, you'll be able to come to this one page, and it will have everything. So it has the agendas, the live stream links, the minutes, and you'll have previous years as well. This is just for 2025, but, and I didn't, I didn't put those in there to show you, but you'll have those as well. So easy to be able to find the information about our various council meetings and work sessions and so forth. And that's a quick overview of the website, but it is coming along really nicely. The department heads have been great about, we've sent it to them and asked them to give us in, in feedback on what they need changed or added. Our chief, our fire chief, his picture that's in there, he was twelve years old, so we're fine, we're gonna get one that is a little bit older, but...
That's what the city's done to me. We're gonna have one before and after.
But, but it's coming together really well, and it's, and it's really been a very great thing to work with our department heads, because they've given us great feedback.
And this will include the finance department just worked through to include an online business license payment portal, which has been something we've desperately needed.
Good point.
Will the ordinances be linked somewhere very easy to access on this new website?
They will be.
Yeah, okay.
And somebody else, I think it was John, was asking, or somebody was. We'll also have the different, like Planning Commission, we'll have those members and the other, I'm sure there's another one that I'm forgetting, but Planning Commissions.
Yeah, there's the Zoning Appeals Board.
Yes. It's good to have all that information out there, so the community knows who these folks are that are part of those decision makers.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
And this is gonna be live kind of the first week of July, or...
We're targeting July sixth, that week, and we, I'll, that's the, that's the target, and it looks good so far, and I think that's what we're gonna do.
Okay.
And I'll, we'll let, we'll update you guys as we get closer, and we'll do a big announcement to the community as, as we go live with this as well.
And I would, I would love to go live on July fourth, but I've been involved in IT projects for a long time. You go live on July fourth, and then if there's a problem, everybody's on vacation for...
Right. Well, and, and, and yeah, you don't want to have to come out on your fourth to fix something, because you just crashed the phone system.
Exactly.
All right, so anyways.
Very good.
Will there be maps of the city on there, like city and county where some of those roads and...
There will be. One of the things that Tim and I talked about, and it will be, I think it's under utilities, there'll be a place that links out to the county site that shows the map, the GIS map of all of the roads.
Road responsibilities.
So that people can, can look there and see which, you know, is that a city road or is that a county road? That's a, but that's good. That's a great question, and we are gonna leverage some of the things that the county already has out there.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Brian, once you go live, are you still having a transition time to continue to make updates? Or you feel like, hey, we're gonna go live and that's gonna be it for a while? We're not gonna make any...
Well, our goal is to have everything updated when we go live. It won't be a trickle, but we'll be, but then, once we go live, then we'll have things that we've got to do, just like we do today with...
But just as far as upgrades to the site itself, you're, this is gonna be it, other than just normal information that would need to be changed that you...
Correct. Unless we run into some problem like a form that we've got, we've gotta take a little bit longer. The form itself, we may have the PDF version available like we do today, and the online version may come a little later. I was talking with the guys earlier today, and they, they said it's gonna be tight, but they're gonna, they're gonna target to get everything done.
Okay. And one thing about this website design is that it will be moving off of a fairly proprietary, Terry, hard to understand system to an open source WordPress system that, part of the vision of that is that with the internet, you want to be able to react to the community's needs and quickly add functions, and we should be able to do that on a fairly routine basis. So this will be a living website instead of the largely dead one that we've had for quite some time.
Yeah, I don't understand all that so much, but does that, does open source make us more vulnerable?
No. As a matter of fact, on this particular, we, it is WordPress. It is the most solid foundation out there today. We have all kinds of security things behind the scenes that take care of all the, the sausage-making, what I call it. There's, the security patches are implemented. Everything's gonna hap, happen as, as these, these things occur. Banks are one great system or a platform that uses WordPress, and many municipalities do. It's the number one platform.
It doesn't, it doesn't change anything about the, the security end of it, but it means that because it's the most prominent platform for actually doing content on the world, in the world that you can find people, and even your administrator can kind of figure out his way around doing something in WordPress, so...
Who's that?
Oh, okay. Okay. I thought you said you could figure something out, and I wasn't sure.
You wanted to make sure that was...
I was, who am I talking about?
Whereas, yeah, whereas on, on the other website, I had to call Brian and go, "I don't know how to make it do this."
And sometimes, we have to call the people in Canada, wherever they are.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
What do you guys think? And Tim, what do you think? By the way, I, I created this before I was in, in attorney, and there is no final draft. This thing is gonna be ongoing, you know what I mean?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Probably for months.
Yes.
You know what I mean? So, I mean, we're gonna find the bugs as we go, you know what I mean? But, and that's okay, that's, we expect that to happen.
Yeah.
But what about we put on the website somewhere, everything that's typically asked for in a FOIA request, that we have the site where people can go on there and we just provide that information to the public?
As far as we know, we never know what people will ask for, but we put all of our records out there. Generally, FOI requests are wanting to correlate things that we never thought to correlate, but, so we will put everything that we possibly can, and generally, when there is an FOI request, we make that information available, even if it was something we didn't think that somebody might want, we just put it out there. But as far as our records, our finances, our actions, all of that is very prominently displayed, and even more prominently with this website.
And I was thinking even our city email accounts that seem to be void quite often, and all of mine were void, and I think there's someone else who was. We just put them out there for people to read. I don't have any problem in doing that, but I just would like to have council's thoughts, rather than having Tim having to spend time and money, or we pay someone to do this, we just provide, you know, whatever we're putting out, like on our email accounts and so on, out there in a...
That's a lot. Stop the store.
Yeah. I would rather them just ask for it, when they ask for it. We will give them whatever they need.
I'm just asking your opinion. I wouldn't mind...
The, the difficulty with that, and the attorney can help me out here, is that there are attorney-client privileges... are attorney-client privilege conversations, there are things that are subject to nondisclosure and exemption, and there is no system in the world that's gonna do that automatically, so, unless you'd like the attorney and I to review every email that goes on the website.
That would be a problem for you, Councilman Rogers. Just saying.
Appreciate you bringing that up.
But I do applaud the effort of transparency.
Yes.
I was, I was just trying to take away some of the work that you have, you know what I mean, put them out, put it out there for, for the city, because they're, they're asking for transparency all the time, so let, you know, my thought, let's get it to them.
I think we've, we've given them, we're one of the most transparent municipalities in the state. It may not be exactly how individuals would like for it to be, but I think as a city, we put it out there, and they, they get to see it. Now, personal emails, I don't want to do that until I talk to my attorney, our attorney, if I, if somebody wanted to look at it, I want to be protected. And just putting it out there, that's why people don't understand, they think we're trying to be closed-mouth about certain things, but sometimes, being an elected official, we have to, because you put not only yourself in jeopardy, but the city.
Right.
Just somebody, somebody comments or something to the city. So, I applaud you, and that's a good idea, but we can't do it.
Well, no, I realize we would have to review the, the emails and so on, I, I do understand, but I was thinking about adding a badge at a time, just to, to go the...
Thank you, Brian, for your hard work on that.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you so much.
You're welcome.
Now, approval of contract with city attorney for legal services. If you look at your tab, a yellow tab, this is the second tab, it has contract written out by our very own Daniel Hughes. Has everybody had a chance to look over this contract? Because we had certain things that we needed changed in it, just some minor details, and we wanted to make sure that was in place before we move further. But I'm glad he's here today, so you know how much we appreciate him, I do.
I'm glad to be here.
Yeah, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Because I bother him on the regular, whenever I have a problem, I, I give him a call, or an email, or a text, and he has guided me in, away from a lot of traps that I could have been in.
So, you want us to ask questions first, or make a motion and then ask questions?
Yeah, we make the motion second, then we'll...
Okay. So how would I, I'd make a motion that we approve the employment contract for the city attorney, Daniel Hughes.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, now we're ready for questions.
First question, Mr. Hughes, I don't know when to send you, I, I, I write a lot of things, and I send it out to council, and I don't include you, you know what I mean? Just things that we're writing, you know, for meetings and so on, because I, in my thoughts, being a former attorney, if it shows up, if it showed up on my email and I had to read it, you know what I mean, and I was charging for that time, you know what I mean, and I don't, and I didn't want to be bothered, didn't bother you with it, you know what I mean, if we weren't really had a, didn't really have a question, but, so, what should I include, you know what I mean? Only things that I think that you should read, or do you want to see everything that council is discussing as far as the agenda and?
I am here to serve council and to provide legal advice.
Right.
And so I would encourage all of council that if you believe and issue merits legal advice, that, that you feel free to reach out to me. And I would also stress that it's, it's my practice that if, if an individual council member reaches out to me to ask a legal question, that that response from me is shared with all of councils, all of councils on the same page, because I represent the city as a whole, not individual council members. So, you know, that's typically, you know, all of my cities are council-form of government, except one, typically, I would say that most cities will feed their questions through the administrator. Administrator will then task me with whatever assignment or whatever opinion is needed.
Okay.
It's, and I don't particularly have a, I'm not telling you that's the way you have to do it, but it may, it wa, it may work better from a communication standpoint between me and the body of council.
Right, okay.
And, you know, I, but I do take calls from council members and the mayor, and of course, Tim, on a, on a regular basis, as, as needed for legal advice.
Right. So should we put that in an ordinance, to say that that's the way the council should work, or?
I don't, that's, I don't think so.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, let me just say, in, in concurring with what Mr. Hughes has, has just said, I, I agree that good practice would dictate that we should funnel our questions through the city administrator first, just to even make sure that they're even worthy of a legal opinion, and, and, and that's not to say that Councilman Rogers doesn't have very good things to, to, to say and good questions to ask, but many times, we don't, we, we need to be careful how we spend our money on legal services and make sure we're actually getting, you know, the right, the right service for what we need, as opposed to just the sounding board, we don't need attorney to be a sounding board.
Yeah, and I typically...
To add on to what you just said, now, I can call Attorney Hughes and say, now, I'm not speaking to Attorney Hughes, I'm speaking to Daniel about his wife or something like, something personal. It's free.
Right.
But if you come to him, and ask anything about the city, and he's giving you advice, it's taken, you know, we're gonna pay for that, and then rightfully so. I mean, how many cities do you represent?
Five. Five.
He's very good.
Right, and I just...
Very good.
No, I...
Yeah, and I'm, I'm just saying that, added on, I didn't say you said anything, I just wanted to add on that we have an excellent attorney that's, that will help us with anything. And any questions you have, like you said, you can bring it all to council, or bring it, and we'll bring it to Tim, and then we'll funnel it to Attorney Hughes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just for council's knowledge, kind of the relationship that Daniel and I have that may be fairly, I think is fairly efficient, is that we will speak from time to time, and I think the efficiency is introduced in, he'll keep a running list, I'll keep a running list, and then when we talk, we can go through things and say, here's what I think about this, here's what I think council needs to know about this. So I do think that that has a certain level, have you found?
Oh, sure.
That as well? That we can kind of group it together, maybe have a couple of conversations a week, and every once in a while, there's a, a red comet heading right for us, and I might call him and say, we need to know about this right now. But generally, there, there are more routine policy discussions that we kind of group for, for a 30-minute conversation.
Okay. Any other questions, for Attorney Hughes?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have a couple more questions for Mr. Hughes. Under item three, the work session meetings, so, when you come to that meeting, that's billable hours, correct?
That's correct.
And, and if, if we need you to come to a different meeting, you could still do that if requested?
Yeah.
Okay. Not that I'm asking you to come to any meetings, but it's in your contract, we'll have you here, and we will be, we're glad to have you here.
Yeah, I'll just, just, in conversations with the mayor and Tim about that, and y'all can correct me if I'm wrong, but there was a sense that it'd be helpful for me to be here on a more regular basis, and the work session meeting is where you were in the, really in the legislative-making process and ironing out issues before they come to your regular business meeting, and that is the meeting which, where my time is more useful for the council.
Perfect, thank you. And then, one other question. The, I noticed item four, you prosecute the criminal cases, are, I mean, you're doing contract law, criminal law, municipal law, I mean, is, I mean, you feel comfortable? I mean, I know this is, I don't want to insult you, okay? I'm just saying, that's a lot, that's a broad area of, of needing to be expertise.
I cut, I cut my teeth as a young lawyer prosecuting jury trials.
Okay.
And so that's how I got a lot of my trial experience, was prosecuting jury trials, so I've done that for a long time. So, the cities we represent, most of them, we do both their general council work and their city prosecution work. So, doing both for Pickens is...
Right.
Is, is typical for me.
Okay, okay. And then, let me ask you, I think this might be the last question, if, I notice you're, you have a partner in your practice?
Yes, I have a partner and an associate.
Okay, so, if for some reason you're not available, and, and we need an answer on something, and we, we can go to someone else in your firm?
Yeah.
For that?
Yes.
Is that billable hours the same as what you're in the contract?
If it's my partner, it would be, and I did not put an associate hourly rate in here, but if you...
Well, I'm mostly more interested in knowing that if we have an issue, we've got somebody, and you're not available, there's someone to reach out to, assuming that's at a billable hour, whatever that is, not to exceed 250, right? I mean, I don't want to say that that's what we should...
No, that's, yeah, there, I'm sure, like last week, my partner covered a couple of council meetings for me, because I was on vacation.
Right.
So we worked that out.
Right, okay, just, I just want to make sure I'm clear about that.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good question. Anybody else?
I, I still have a question about this, I, I mean, does council really want to leave the issues that we want to address the attorney with our administrator? I mean, I don't, I don't know, I mean...
It's really a team effort, it, I mean, we, we, we would come together and, and direct our administrator to get in touch with the attorney.
Right.
It would be funneled through him, that'd be that, because they'd have a continuous dialogue on a weekly basis, so I think we trust him with the daily operations as far as administrator of the town of Pickens, and we see all his responsibilities. I think it would be great that we sort of funnel that into one person, that's my opinion, and that's just what I think.
And I usually don't, I don't funnel anything to him, you know, things have been added that I've written, and be, later, and I, it's because I didn't add him, and they were added later, thinking I made a mistake, somebody thought I made a mistake, and I'm like, I didn't know to send it to him, you know what I mean? So that, the issue is how and who determines what gets to our attorney, you know what I mean, for, you know, seems like we're council-form of government, we should decide, you know what I mean, what our attorney says as a council, you know what I mean, not our administrator.
Or even just one individual like you, that writes something and tells people to put it in.
Yeah.
Yeah, we shouldn't be that way, and it's a council-form of government, it runs that way. You would never direct him, or Tim should not ever be directed by one individual, it has to be at least four.
So, are we saying that council then would have to direct him in a meeting to contact? I mean, I still not clear as to how things get to the attorney, you know, when we're sharing emails, and questions, and concerns back and forth, and how are we gonna then, if I tell Tim, I want you to ask the attorney, or do I just include the attorney's name, you know what I mean, and in the, with the folks and, you know, with the council that I'm sending it to, and just say, I have this concern, and I have put Ally Lissay and John and the attorney on there, well, I bypassed administrator, you know what I mean, and I didn't ask him, so I'm, I'm not clear as to what...
Yes, he'd be in a council-form of government, like you stated, it shouldn't just be a couple of council, you should talk to everybody.
Right.
And then have that, and they would say, well, that's something that's out of our ballpark, we can't handle that. Tim, would you please get in touch with the attorney?
Then I, and if I do that, and I've created a forum, you know what I mean, in our email, you know what I mean, if I actually ask council, you know what I mean, I address a concern to all of council and Tim, you know what I mean, that I would like you guys to give me your opinion, or to, you know, Tim...
Well, you can, you can avoid all that, because we meet twice a month. If it's something that you need to bring up, you bring it to the meeting and do it in public.
Well, that, that's, then we're going back to, it's not just Tim talking to the attorney all the time, it's council deciding when we're gonna, when we're going to use the attorney?
Mr. Mayor?
During meetings?
Um, to try to clarify this, Daniel, and I'm making an assumption here, and you'll either embarrass me or agree with me, there's a difference, when Daniel gets an email that says, Daniel Hughes, city attorney, I need your advice on this, and very often, I will CC Daniel, where I believe Daniel knows, and we've got this rhythm, that I'm not looking for him to answer, I'm looking for him to be aware.
Yeah.
And then if he sees a red flag when he just scans over it, he'll weigh in, is that accurate?
That's, yes.
But you are billing for that time, though. You're still scanning it, I would bill for that time, you know what I mean, if I had to scan an email, you know what I mean, and come back with a, a question, I would be, I would be billing for that time, I mean, you should. So that still opens the door to, how do we know when to put you on there, you know what I mean? If I, if I add your name to any given email, and you're scanning it, then we are in billable hours.
Well, in my, in my experience, Mr. Rogers, it, it works better, we already mentioned efficiency, it is from an efficiency standpoint, it works better, and you have to, Tim has a...
I have no question about him, he's awesome.
Years of experience, and he can know, all right, we really need to consult Daniel with this, or not.
Right.
And so I think that's, that's what makes it more efficient, is that...
How do we do that, is my question.
Send, send Tim an email, call and say, you know, I've got a concern, I think it's a legal issue, please get in touch with Daniel.
Okay, and then, I am, as one council member is asking him, and then it's his job then to contact all of council to ask their opinion as to whether they ask you or not?
I don't think, no, no, he's, he's not, he can't go and start polling council outside of a meeting about, about certain issues. So you're asking him to follow through on that, he's going to do that, and I'll get back to him, and then he, and then whether or not, how that information's presented to council, whether it's a legal memo from me, or an executive session, or something that I address at a work session meeting with all the council, we just have to see how that plays itself out.
Okay.
Yeah, because we, we start operating on a slippery slope with that client and attorney privilege, and we send things out fast, and it needs to be, if it's something that you want to have council in on it, like you said, we want to be transparent, just bring it up to coun, in the council meeting.
And just, and just from a relationship standpoint, from your council, I've, I've found it is hurtful to other council members when they say, well, Daniel told me this, and they're like, well, I didn't know that, and so it's just better if it's all together.
Right.
As much as it can be.
Yeah, I totally agree. So, go ahead.
Councilman Rivers?
I'm already lost. No, I was, I'm understanding a little bit what, from what his concerns are, you know, I mean, so what's the procedure here? When I, when I have a question, are we sentence procedure now that I call him first? I mean, I'm getting, this is kind of getting to a slippery slope here, how we handle, we handle this stuff. Yeah, the more we talk about it, the more it's like, okay, now what do I do? Oh, I got, I got a legal question, like, top of Tim, Tim's not a lawyer, just get a little bit confused there.
Him being the administrator, he will get in touch with the attorney if you need to, it's all about billing.
Yeah.
I mean, and it's all about how we do it collectively, and if you have a question, it's not about having dialogue with one another, all you have to do is give that question to Tim and CC everybody on it, and we won't respond to that, and then Tim will bring it and let us know. But, what, they're still using us, it's still a slippery slope?
I mean, I wasn't, I didn't have a problem with it in the beginning, so I just, I just get, now that you're up in the can of worms, I'm getting a little bit confused.
There's, there's nothing wrong with you calling me.
Yeah.
Okay? What I, what I've, I think I've raised the issue, or maybe it was because Mr. Rogers asked me, but from an efficiency standpoint, generally speaking, it's more efficient to go through Tim.
Yeah.
As opposed to me getting calls from six...
Well, everybody asks the same question in a different way, and funnel through one and filter down to one question.
Do keep in mind that Daniel's reply is always going to be to all of council, even if it's an individual question, so, he serves the council, not individuals.
So if you ask him a question, you...
So if you ask him a question, you respond to everybody? You don't respond just to the mayor or to Tim ever? You, you respond to all of us always?
Well, I, I think, I'm, I'm trusting that if I just responded to Tim or to the mayor, that that, that they would funnel it out to all the council.
Okay.
I mean, but I, if, if, if you need me to start...
I, I just want to know what our procedure is. I don't...
I can tell you, there have been numerous cases where council members have called me and said, we need to seek Daniel's advice about X. And we have had a conversation where I said, I'm glad to ask Daniel, but I already know the answer because Y, Z, Q, and A, B, C.
Right.
And then the council member's going, oh, well, we probably don't need to ask Daniel. And then we just go on with life.
Yeah, usually, best way I'm with you, there's no, there's no problem. I just want to know in the future, because it has come up with me in, in some issues. It's the last few months, you know what I mean? And I, I didn't think of copy you on it, and I wasn't going to copy you on it, you know? Because I figured you had to read it, and it was billable time, you know what I mean? So I would just want to know council's opinion as to the procedure. So what do we do in that case? So everyone's agreeing, we're gonna, we're going to submit our questions to Tim? And then we will tell Tim whether he, we want him to ask the...
Or discuss them in a work session when Daniel's here in person.
Right, and he's not here very often.
He's going to be here for a work session.
Once a month.
Huh?
He's got a contract, he's going to be here for a work session.
I understand. I, I know it says that, but I know he's really busy. So I'm not sure if he can do that, you know what I mean? So...
He just said he can't, he's, he's a, he's, he's, you got people that can stand in for him.
Right.
The reason we're going in this direction, and I asked him to give us a new contract because it's been, it was an old contract. When was the last?
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty. And so I wanted this to be our contract as far as this council.
Right.
And I was going to ask him because a lot of times we were dealing with issues that we really needed Daniel here because it just got out of hand.
Yeah.
And I think, I asked him, would you put that in the contract that he'd be with us on work sessions? So that we all can be together at that time and we can hash out anything that we're trying to do. Then Daniel could keep us legally signed.
Yeah.
Because a lot of times we said things and did things or even went on the avenue that we shouldn't have gone through.
Yeah.
And we would have been better if we'd have got council.
Yeah.
And so if it's not an emergency, wait to work session. And then we'll all be here and we can ask and move forward.
Because I, I wanted you here a lot more, you know what I mean? Couple, every meeting, actually, I'd like to have you here, you know what I mean? But I, I, if you don't come, is your partner going to come?
I will have someone cover every work session meeting, but I plan to be at every one.
Okay. Will, will it ever be a person who's not an attorney?
No, never.
So not your, your assistant or paralegal?
No, no, no.
Okay.
No.
Just want to make sure.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just interject one thing, just to, just to, this is about best practice. This is not an ordinance, it's a contract. We're talking about procedures here, they're not policies. And if at some point we see it's not working one way, we can change it, we can interject, we can, you know, Councilman Rogers can come up with a list of bullet points of how it should work. Maybe fifteen or twenty or fifty bullet points, no flow charts and things like that. Maybe, I know you're getting good with the flow chart. Anyway, so I, I don't know if there's been a problem in the past. I haven't seen it while I've been on council, that there's a problem of communication. And, and personally, I'm more comfortable running questions through Tim and just saying, what's your experience with this? And if he says, you know what, I don't have experience, let's, let's talk to the legal expert. And, and so I, I'm, if there, was there a motion made?
Yes, there's been seconded and we've been question pointing, now we're getting ready to have a vote.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody have any more questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Welcome aboard.
You might not be welcome.
Thank you so much.
Just slip out the back.
All right. Public hearing of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash two FY twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty twenty-six budget ordinance. It is now open for public hearing. Does anybody want to talk about the budget? Any concerns?
You're talking about that?
It's a public...
Not, not yet.
Not yet. I'm gonna turn you loose in a minute.
I just want to make sure you don't slip behind me there.
No, we wouldn't do that. We wouldn't do that, buddy. Okay, it's no one. We will now close public hearing for ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash O two FY twenty twenty, I mean, sorry, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget ordinance. Now, we ready for the approval of the second reading of the ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash two FY twenty twenty, twenty, twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget ordinance. We hope for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we approve the second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero two FY twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget in the form of an ordinance.
I second your motion.
It's been promptly moved and seconded. Now we're ready for questions.
I'd like to further amend the motion, and I may be out of order on this as far as...
No, you can make that part of the motion.
Well, I wanted to make a correction to the budget, a minor thing, it's not a major thing. But in the, in the list of scheduled fees for the recreation...
Which page are you on, sir?
This is on page five. In the, in the list of fees for the use of facilities, the Pickens Amphitheater fee, references in the notes that the cleanup fee may be waived if inspected by city staff, but there's no cleanup fee actually listed. And it's not a reference from another section that would cover that. So I would like to propose as part of my motion to add a fifty dollar cleanup fee to the amphitheater cost for cleanup. That would be fifty dollars regardless of the number of hours used.
Want to second it? Have you been agreed with that?
Sorry, can you repeat the email one more time? I was just reading it.
Under the Pickens Amphitheater fee, you'll see the cost per hour, per the hour designated. And you'll see at the bottom of that chart where it says there's a cleanup fee that could be waived under certain circumstances. That fee is not noted in the budget. So technically, you can't charge a fee, it's not there. I'm asking that we put the fee in it, because all the other categories of use for facilities have a fee, a cleanup fee listed, the pavilions, the picnic areas, et cetera. So this just, I think it's just an oversight, but it needs to be added. And I, and I apologize for not noticing it sooner. It could have been corrected prior to this meeting.
Amen. Did you propose a fee?
I did propose a fee of fifty dollars. That's in consultant, consultation with Mr. O'Brien, who suggested that would be reasonable. I agreed, I concurred with that.
Is that for an hour cleanup?
It's a one-time cleanup fee per use.
Whether it takes all day or an hour?
That's, that's, I, I, that's how the others are written. The others are written the same way. If you'll, so if you notice that for the stadium fee, this cleanup fee is seventy-five dollars regardless of the hours used. So I'm just, and my, my, my point is to be consistent with that. There's no need to have a graduated cleanup fee.
Mr. Mayor, these, these fees are more often seen as incentive to take your stuff out and get the, the fee back at the end of the event. It's not really intended to cover heavy-duty cleanups, it's to try to avoid having those all together. The organizers of the events recognizing that they need to clean up for themselves.
I would propose a little bit higher than that. I mean, I've been involved in helping at the amphitheater before, following a Friday night concert and several of our public members that are sitting out here as well. And it's, it can be more than, I think if we're trying to avoid the fact of needing it, then make it higher and really encourage them to clean up.
One, one of the questions that came up was how many private groups are using the amphitheater? Many of the events are city-sponsored, and the fee would not apply to those events.
Correct.
Not a lot, but if one came up...
Yeah.
For this fall, it would be one.
What would you suggest?
I would say at least a hundred dollar cleanup fee for the amphitheater. If, four seventy-five, which is what it, that proposes is for Bruce, and that's a large facility to clean up as well.
So the amphitheater is what, from the stage all the way to the street?
In my opinion, if you're renting that property, you're within that property boundary for your event. That's your area that you need to be...
Could we just add the amphitheater to the, the legislature for Bruce Stadium and amphitheater?
Well, it's on the...
And follow the same schedule?
It's on the next page because the cost for the amphitheater is more than Bruce. So I think it would be good to keep it separate, but I would say that the, I would propose a cleanup fee of a hundred dollars.
I, I agree with that.
And I'm really glad that you noticed that.
Well, I will amend my, if, if we're in agreement that a hundred dollars is more fair and more of an incentive for cleanup, then I will amend that, my motion to amend the motion with a hundred dollars instead of fifty dollars.
I'll amend my second move of the motion.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded.
Has it been properly moved?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it was.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So, just want to follow on the straight. So what you're saying is basically this is no more than eight hours, it's flat one hundred feet?
Now, the, this, the cleanup fee is different than the rental fee.
Okay, got you.
Mr. Mayor?
So we're just going from, so there is no cleanup fee then?
That was the issue.
Yeah, that's the issue, yeah.
I thought it was just part of the rental fee.
Would it be better if I just withdrew my motion entirely and started over?
Yes, sir. You got it?
We've got it.
Read it.
Okay, it was moved and seconded that this is second reading. And then it was amended, and I, I would do that as an amendment.
Yes.
And it was amended by John McManus to do a fifty dollar cleanup fee. And our members proposed that it be more and it be a hundred dollars. And John McManus and Mary Wilson amended that it be a hundred dollars.
Good, good.
And that, that fee may be waived.
It may be waived if inspected by city staff and determined to be in clean condition.
Okay.
Yes.
So that, that motion needs to be voted on separately from the...
Right, as an amendment.
As an amendment, correct.
This will be amendment number one to the budget.
So we're going to vote on the amendment to the budget before we vote on the budget?
Right.
Thank you.
Because there could be other discussion or amendments.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Ready for question? Any other questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. This is just for the fee change.
And you are earning your keep already. Thank you.
Yeah.
Now...
That's what I got, when you said change, I was like...
Now we're ready for the approval of second reading of number twenty...
No, more questions first, right? There may be more amendments.
There may be more discussion.
I have a question. We had discussed briefly the line item with the teen canteen roof. I'm assuming that's remaining the same at a hundred thousand, correct?
That's correct.
And then can, Mandy, can you just clarify again where the vehicle rental, is that, that's allocated out or divvied out per department, correct?
Um, the police department and I would work through utilities, split into two departments.
So recreation isn't getting anything from the enterprise? They're not anticipating getting any vehicles?
Recreation and fire are getting one vehicle from what they had capitalized.
Right, okay. And then we still do have in here two proposed positions for ordinance enforcement, correct?
That's correct.
And those are in administrative or...
As directed.
So can that be changed?
Anything can be changed.
Yeah.
We changed it once at council direction and changed it again, so we can certainly change it.
Change what? Say, say your question.
I was more concerned, I'd rather it say one, and then if we feel like we needed one later, to add one. As far as the, the two jobs, co-jobs.
Oh.
That's what you were speaking of, correct?
Yeah, that's what I was just asking about.
So I thought we agreed last meeting. I think you weren't here that we were going to, we needed both of the...
Two separate titles.
Two separate titles.
Two separate things to do.
There was originally one position, but it was council's direction to make it two.
Right, so we're talking about the budget right now, so my concern is I think we should have one and then add one later.
I disagree.
If we feel like we needed it. I'm not sure if we need to.
We need to.
We can always add.
We need to.
I think we need to.
We need to right now.
You think so?
I think so.
And could you...
And we've budgeted for that.
Mm-hmm. I know this is the budget we're talking about.
Yes.
It's not been approved yet.
I get that, but that we've, we've proposed a budget that covers those two positions. And there is enough to do for two individuals.
I don't think you really can say there's enough to do. You think there's enough to do, but we don't really know there's enough to do.
We don't know that there's not enough to do. You're saying there's not enough to do, but I'm saying there is enough to do, and it's just a matter of opinion either way.
Yeah, right, exactly.
It's, it's...
Exactly.
Well...
The money's in the budget, then we can hire somebody, you know what I mean?
We could save some money and not add that in the budget.
Yeah, but their job descriptions, there's plenty of things for each of them to do if you read the job description. It's totally different.
Yeah, we, we went through that, I, I mean, there's so much...
Yeah, I understand that. I'm just, I've read it, went back and look at it, and that's just my opinion.
Okay.
Okay.
And I don't, you know what I mean?
Do we need to take a vote? Do we want to do one or two?
No, no, I didn't make a motion with that. It was just, yeah.
Yeah. But it's still open for question at this time for the budget?
The, the, the way I see it is that those people, those two positions will pay for themselves, in my opinion.
You very well might be right.
Eventually.
You very well might be right, but I'm, but I'm saying, you know, it's...
I, I'm not criticizing you, I mean, I'm just saying, I think it will be, I think we'll be happy, just in my experience with the two positions for a town this size, I think we need the two.
I'm not entering the debate, but just from experience, it's my third term being here. We have been behind the eight ball when it comes to that specific issue. We're so far behind that we had just kicked the can down the road and didn't do it. It's a big job that needs to be taken care of. It's going to bring forth a lot of revenue for people that are not doing what they're supposed to do financially for the city of Pickens. But then again, after a year, just like McMan, Councilman McManus said, we can look at it and, or even within this year if it doesn't work and we're having a problem. We as council can... as council can change.
I mean, so, I mean, we're, we haven't even started talking about parking yet, and I think we're going to use these, these officers to do the parking too.
Well, again, I just, just a concern I have, I have some more.
Yeah.
All right, well you, this is the time to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, let us know.
Mandy, was the, was the increase for the salary that we discussed with Tim?
Excuse me just a second, y'all, can I just have a moment of time? Could we take a five minute recess? Because I have to use the press.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we take a five minute recess and report back here in five minutes.
Second.
It's been second, all in favor? All right.
He wants to open a, he wants to change the zone.
It's properly moved in second, all in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous, now we're back at it. We're still dealing with the approval of second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash O two FY twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget ordinance. And we're at question point right now for any that want to bring up any questions or comments concerning the budget as a whole.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So, um, for me to be an absent from the last, last meeting.
Mm-hmm.
I wasn't, I'm not up to date with the fire fee and how we, we came up with that.
Mm-hmm.
So the first question I have is, just so you can answer, I mean, we have four, six and ten, so four percent would be what? Six percent would be what? Ten point five be what?
That's the ascent, assessment ratio of the property.
Right, so four percent would be to like homestead the house.
Owner occupied home.
Okay, and then six percent would be?
Commercial.
Commercial.
Or a second.
Or a second at home.
Yeah, and that'd be ten, what would be ten point five?
Ten point five is very rare, but it's industrial.
Mm-hmm. I, I just didn't know that for sure, so I just wanted to find that out. So also on the fire fee, um, conversation, early conversations I've had, we were speaking of trying to do this in the phases.
Correct.
Yeah, versus all at one time, and, um, I'm in favor of that, still in favor of that, uh, and so I think that that fee, when you start off phases, it would be like three point two five rather than four percent, if we did in phase.
So, Councilman, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So Councilman, or as you, you're speaking of, we had started at the three point two five percent, right?
Right.
And that was what you were comfortable with?
Right, right, right.
And then I believe we had asked for the administrator and the fire chief to come up with half of the fire chief, or of the fire department's budget, which would be closer to six hundred thousand versus five hundred thousand, correct? Because it's a one point two million.
So that's not the information that I've got.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Basically to track it through, we were five hundred ninety to six hundred thousand was fifty percent. Um, we made an educated guess, as we shared with council at the time, because we were awaiting documentation and the data from the county, which was delayed and took some time. The first data they gave us was incomplete and flawed, and then prior to our last work session, um, we did get all of the parcel data and we were able to determine that the six hundred thousand dollars to achieve that would need to be four percent. So that was what was.
So is the number that we're trying to achieve is six hundred or five hundred?
Six hundred.
So, but it was at five hundred?
It was at five hundred and ninety.
Oh.
Because they're, they're overall, we, we tasked them with finding half of what the fire department's overall budget was to start with, and that would be closer to six hundred.
So let me, if you don't mind, can I ask Mr. Elrod what that, that number is, that you, the five hundred thousand or the, I mean, we, when we spoke about it, not to put you on the spot or anything, I'm just trying to figure all this out.
When, when we came up with the three point two five, the, the first part was, um, like the administrator said, we, we were waiting on complete data. Um, so that was a very educated guess, but it came up just a little bit short. And i- if the council needs six hundred thousand dollars for the fire fee to generate, then you're going to have to be at four percent of the assessed value of the properties. That includes the, um, vacant land, um, uh, the exempt properties that we could do a, um, a fee for as well is included in that. And that's based on ninety-seven percent collection rate, I believe is what we went with. So just because the fee may generate X number of dollars, we have to be realistic on what is actually going to be collected. And the council, Pickens County has an, always set a ninety-seven percent collection rate on the taxes, so.
And to make sure that, um, Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, the next item on the agenda is related specifically to the fire fees, um, we have an amendment that I expect to be forthcoming on that, that I want to make sure everybody's aware of, um, that spells out, uh, we have talked about segregating, uh, these funds that would be collected within the general fund by account, um, and looking at the law further. When we get above or right around six hundred thousand dollars, we're right on the verge of a state required separate fund. So we do have an amendment for the fire fees ordinance that would create a separate, um, account completely, so it would be segregated. The six hundred thousand dollar figure covers the ongoing, we've got a million dollars and change in ongoing operations, and then that doesn't, that operational figure doesn't include a truck or a hose or any of those other things, so that separate fund would be available to the fire department as capital needs come, so that we can get into a capital needs planning, uh, phase as we move in. So, just to make sure that everybody knew about that addition to the fire fees ordinance before we get to that.
Mr. Mayor, wait, Chief, I have a question. How are we, how are you looking at doing properties like the market at the mill where there's multiple buildings, multiple businesses?
The way the ordinance is written is off of the, um, assessed value that the county has already obtained. So, um, that is a, um, a property that already has an assessed value on the county, so we would, um, um, it would be assessed based off of that.
And then it's up to individual property owners if they have multiple businesses on their property to divvy that out between their business owners if they wanted to?
Sure.
Okay.
Because the tax bill would just go to the, whoever the owner is of the property owner, correct?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any other questions on the budget? Any comments?
I, I, one more comment.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, sir. The reason why I asked that question was, is because when we first talked, talked about this, we talked about, you know, phasing it then, so it wouldn't be such an impact on our citizens as much, just to let you know where the root of my question was coming from. I wasn't questioning all the other stuff or anything like that, I was just questioning that, would it be better to phase it in than it would just all at one time? Just to get that clarified.
Amen. All right. Thank you, sir. Any others? But it's been properly moved in second. All in favor, raise your right hand.
All in favor.
We didn't have a motion.
Oh, that was, that was.
I was.
Did we have a?
John made the original motion.
Yeah.
For what?
Original motion, he made the first amendment.
Okay, I got you, good. I'm just worried. You, you so used to being, I got my man behind me.
Good, good.
I don't need you right.
All right, all right.
I know, she had it. Okay, it's been properly moved in second, all in favor?
Hasn't.
All right.
I'm still lost. So what are we, getting ready to?
For the budget?
Altogether.
Second reading.
Oh, okay, see, I'm still lost, so I thought we was breaking things down.
Do you have more questions?
Well, I might. We, we just moved right along and I didn't.
Okay.
I was getting ready to vote right along with y'all. Because I didn't know.
All right.
So just let me get them all, but just make sure I get everything straightened out here. I'll just, uh, with me not being at the meeting last week, I'm just a little bit behind, but, you know, just, I guess we'll just go ahead and vote on it.
Mr. Mayor, if the council member is not comfortable with, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to hear more of your questions, I have no problem with it.
Yeah.
We're not rushing you at all.
Absolutely.
Well, I don't think I really have any more questions, because most of the questions I had, if I did have a question, it's things we brought up in the past that, that I were, was against, that we passed for, um, like the pay study, for example, I was never really ever against the pay study. I just, I just wanted to, um, take it a little bit further and go and, you know, interview the, the, all the department heads and just, and go through that and just, and make, that might have been, they got paid more or less. I just wanted to review their, their, so that's one of the reasons why I'm not, probably not going to vote for the budget. Fleet management thing, I'm, I think it's a very good idea, but I just feel like, uh, the time is a little bit off with all the, as much as we spent already on our budget. And I think we could have worked harder and sat down and got it down to where we could have saved some money for the people. Dalton property is an issue for me. I just think that's completely unnecessary to buy that piece of property. That's just my opinion, and, and I'm concerned about the, uh, the thing about borrow money, reserves, borrow money, whatever you want to call it, or pay an interest on the money that's in the general fund, so that's borrowed money. And I'm concerned about that, and with, with that being said, working on borrowed money is not a new thing or a bad thing, it's just that we need to run our, counts, our city accordingly. So I guess that's about all I had to say.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Anybody else have anything else you'd like to say? Now we're ready for vote. All in favor, raise your right hand of the budget.
As amended.
As amended.
I'm sorry.
As amended, please forgive me. All in favor of the budget as amended, raise your right hand. All opposers, it's five to one. Thank you so much. Now, number eleven is public hearing of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash five to amend article one in general of chapter seven dash three, Fire Prevention and Protection of the City of Pickens Code of Ordinance. It is now open for public hearing for anyone that'd like to speak. Yes, sir.
What you're about to hear.
Come on up here. So everybody, you.
What you're about to enter into with fire and thing, now, you're taking in consideration the reassessments of properties like industrial properties and things like that, or just going to go with what county has out there?
That's a good question. I think we, we really do struggle with that at one point and really get a, a good handle on.
The, um, basically, the general answer to that question is that these are the reassessed values, um, and this system will allow us to see growth to support a fire department through the reassessment in future years, which the prior system of a flat fee charge to everyone was a regressive system, um, and this is more based on the ability to pay based on the value of the property that people own.
But what my concern is, if a, an industrial park or something was undervalorized according to the county, are you going to have it reappraised through your consultants?
Now, this will be based on the county assessment.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments? At this time, the public hearing for ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash five to amend article number one in general of chapter seven dash three, Fire Prevention and Protection of the City of Pickens Code of Ordinance, is will be closed at this time. We move to chap, the number twelve, approval of second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash five to amend article one in general of chapter seven dash three, Fire Prevention and Protection of the City of Pickens Code of Ordinance. This time we'll have a, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for the approval of the second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash O five to amend article one of chapter three seven, Fire Prevention and Protection of the City of Pickens Code of Ordinance.
I second.
It's been properly moved in second. All ready for question? All in favor, raise your right hand.
Well, I have.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Tim, did we want to make the amendment to this at this time?
Yes, that would be.
Yes, we do need to make the amendment.
So, so are we going to amend it? Is she going to have to make a motion again, or can we amend it within the, the motion?
Anyone can make a motion to amend, it doesn't have to be Ms. Winters.
Okay. All right, hang on a minute, I, I thought Tim was going to do this, but, um.
He can't.
Sorry.
He can't do it.
Well.
You've got to do it.
Thought we were going to do it and nothing.
Where are you?
Uh, remember you and I were, were talking about, no, no, it wasn't you and I, I'm sorry, it was John and I and Tim.
The, the intended amendment, um, basically, if, if it's five percent or more of the city's budget, which it's not quite that, but it may get there, it has to be in a separate account or fund, not the general fund, so the amendment would call for that, and we also need to report, which I think is a wonderful idea, on an annual basis, um, what the revenues were for the fire department, so that will be tracked in an annual report.
Okay.
So, I would like it to read, I think John and I and Tim were talking. Okay.
To amend.
I need, I want to make an emotion to amend section three.
Seven.
No, I'm sorry. Where is it?
It's on the second page up at the top.
Section one D.
I'm sorry, I was on the wrong page.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, section seven point three, seven dash three D.
Oh, D.
And to read, "All fire protection fees collected shall be deposited into a separate and segregated fund and shall be used solely for the operational and capital needs of the Pickens Fire Department as required by South Carolina Code six dash one dash three thirty D." Period, "An annual report on fire fee revenue and expenditures shall be published and made publicly available, including on the City of Pickens website in compliance with six dash one dash three thirty F."
Now, what did you just say?
Tim, you want to?
Second.
I'm just kidding. You got a second?
I think that's good, yeah.
All in favor?
I have another question, sorry, so just to clarify, if you, if a property owner does not currently receive a property tax bill for their building property, they will get a bill in lieu of tax from the city, not from the county. So our office will issue those directly?
If required, that's the, the wording, we believe that the, um, we shouldn't have any issue using the county system.
Okay.
But if that changes at any time in the future, we can bill those direct.
Okay. And did we get a number on how many of those currently not receiving tax bills will be receiving fire protection bills? will be receiving fire protection bills?
Chief Elrod, did you have a?
I brought a question, she's questioning.
I thought she was, I don't know if her questions were related to the motion.
Is that related to the motion?
No, I'm sorry.
Let's go on then.
This is what you need to vote on.
On the motion that I made.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
So I made a motion.
And I seconded it.
Second, okay.
It's been promptly moved to second. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just, let me make sure I'm clear. We are voting on the amendment.
Yes, sir.
To the original motion.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Sorry. Just want to make sure.
And I sent that motion, a copy of the statement to Donna, I mean, for the record.
Okay.
And Tim had it also. So one we discussed with him.
Yes. I just want to make sure I'm clear on what we're, that we're not jumping, we're not like voting on everything on here all at once. It's just one amendment only.
Yeah.
Sorry, proceed. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
All right. Any other question?
So was that unanimous?
I didn't, I didn't get a chance to vote.
He didn't get a chance to vote. It's not running here.
Sorry.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposes, it's unanimous. Now, we will go further into the second reading of ordinance 2025-5 to amend Article, I'm sorry, amend Article One in General of Chapter Seven-Dash-Three, Fire Prevention and Protection of the City of Pickens Code of Ordinance.
Yeah, I just.
Yes, ma'am.
And do we have a number for how many of the properties that are currently not receiving tax bills will be receiving a fire protection?
Yes, ma'am, I do. There's thirty-nine partials that would be owned by churches, places of worship. Some of them are vacant land. Some of them are the actual church buildings. There's thirty-nine of those partials and then.
Partial means?
The, parcel.
I'm sorry, I think it's a partial.
And then twelve that are listed as exempt properties, which.
And exempt would be like nonprofit?
Correct.
Yeah.
And then there's two that are listed with the county as low-income apartments. So they are assessed at zero percent, but yet they would still be receiving their currently, last year, they were sent a, a tax note. It's based on just the fire fee we charged last year and the stormwater fee, but there was no tax associated with that low-income apartment. So they would continue to receive a, a charge for that service.
Thank you.
Chief.
Go ahead, you have chief.
I have a question for the chief. So let me make sure I'm clear. The low-income apartments are owned by the City of Pickens?
No, no, sir, no, sir. That's just, whenever I got the data from the county, I found that they were assessed at zero percent, but it did have the, what, the actual appraised value and the assessed value. But for some reason, they're assessed at zero percent. I believe this is a new, something that has occurred throughout the state that they're no longer, for low income, they're exempt from having to pay taxes.
It's become a common practice for Lytec housing developers to organize as nonprofits for taxes.
Okay, but then, so, but the fire fees, if they're not assessed by the county, we create our own assessment valuation?
But, correct, but the, the numbers were already provided by the county for when they were, their assessed value at the time and the appraised value. So I had that data.
Okay, so the, this is old data, though?
This is, it's based off of 2024.
Okay, but it, but going forward, it will not change?
I cannot answer, I, I don't know that answer to that.
I mean, there's not going to be assessment going forward. There's going to be assessment zero. But you're saying there's, there was an assessment before the law changed? And so we're going to go off of that assessment for right now?
And we do have the capability within the ordinance to do our own assessments where an assessment is not created by the county.
But our ordinance is going to say that when there's not an assessment, we're going to use a formula of our own making?
Yes, but the multifamily structures are actually charged out as a, at a different rate, which. Well, not a flat fee, but what, what is the?
Under the old?
Or under the new? What, what are we doing?
You guys in here that a multifamily residential apartment complex is charged a hundred thirty-one dollars and twenty-five cents for one to three units and seventy-five dollars for each unit total of three. Is that what we're talking about?
That's current language.
But that's current. Yes, but all that's going to the percent.
That's the current ordinance language.
That's the current ordinance language, but it, it may be the current, what we're doing, but it's also what we're going to be going, doing going forward for now.
Except the rate increased from forty dollars to seventy-five dollars?
That's right, yeah.
What, I, I think what we can do is this will materially change the way we're approaching fire fees. It's, it's a more progressive, more fair assessment of the fee. And I think that this time next year, we will be able to look back and analyze, do we need to add language around engaging appraisals, which I think may come? But I'd say let's get, if it were my recommendation, and I think, Chief, you may agree, let's get a year under our belt and then see, because those are going to be questions around the margins. Most of this, ninety-five percent of it's clear. But we'll find out more.
But, and the reason I'm bringing this up, because we have a formula for non-exempt properties. And we're now, we're saying there are other non-exempt properties that are not houses of worship. And it's been typically, I mean, we've been pinpointing that as where the exemption is, other than government entities, right?
And nonprofits, we've mentioned that.
We haven't mentioned nonprofits, but I didn't realize that there were housing complexes that were nonprofits. So I'm learning something here.
Me too.
And that they, for that reason, they get to pass on property taxes. I'm going to incorporate my house and put it.
Good luck.
If you wish to take care of it, all of one blow this evening, you could amend the language to say whenever failing the county's assessment of property, that the city has the prerogative to engage an appraiser to determine the fare value.
Hey, just a side note, there was one, one place of worship that the information the county sent me was, had an actual appraised value. And when I did six percent of that versus our formula that we had, they were within a thousand dollars of each other, the assessed value. So it was a, we have a pretty, fuck our, our formula that we have is going to be pretty accurate with that.
Right. Well, and I've already agreed to the formulations, how we're doing this. So I'm not questioning that, but I'm just going to make sure what we're applying it to. And, and so what I'm hearing is that we're going to apply that to these, these couple of complexes?
There, there's two, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you. Tim.
I know I ask this every time. Have you spoke to the, the county any further about adding these fees to the tax bills? And whether or not they're going to bill us for doing this?
The, once again, the billing, we've actually answered this question. The billing was for adding fire fee collection to their system.
Right.
This is a change in how we collect fire fees. We're not adding a line item or a process. We will give them a report that has totals on it. The totals will be different, but the process is the same.
But they've been calculating this up to now and they're?
We're, we'll, it, it, there will be no fee. We'll get it covered.
Okay. And they, and as far as billing for the nonprofits and so on, we have?
We will just send them addresses. In IT projects, when you ask for something new to be created, which billing for fire fees was something new to them, they charge us ten thousand dollars for that. They didn't really charge us to collect the fee. They charged us to add it to their system. It's added. It's been added for a number of years.
Now it's just a blank in their system that needs a number.
Yeah.
And we give it to them. Right? So, yeah.
So we're good.
And my, my, I guess my, the second question, I didn't, maybe I didn't speak clearly. How, how are, again, are we going to collect? We're mailing out notices to the nonprofits and, and the exempt property, and they don't pay?
All right. We are going to send them a list of addresses. My communications with them is if they have an address, there are currently non-taxable entities that are receiving county tax bills that have our fire fee on them. There should be no difference.
Okay.
The, the wording of the ordinance, because of that concern, allows the flexibility that if that changes or it becomes an issue with any set of properties, this gives us the capability to directly deliver those. So we have both options, but I don't see that there will be any issue with the county sending, as they do now, tax bills to non-taxable entities for other fees.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Now, we got laws, it's still a motion on the floor. It's second, it's been second? I have one amendment. All right. Now we're ready to vote for the ordinance, right?
As amended.
As amended. As amended. Yes. Y'all get me confused. I don't know drugs. I'm on back medicine. Okay, I got it. Now, the motion has been carried and with the amendment, all in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. I got through it, attorney.
You did.
I did. Good job. All right. Now, discussion approval of resolution number 2025-R1 of the City Councils, of the City of Pickens, affirming that the city shall not require annexation for the provision of city services and shall only annex property under the hundred percent voluntary method as provided under South Carolina law, while encouraging annexation in certain unincorporated areas where city serves, services provide a strong value proposition. Now we're ready.
Mr. Mayor. I, I move to postpone, without discussion, the consideration of resolution number 2025-R1 to the City Council Work Session Scheduled for July twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five.
Mr. Mayor, I second that.
July twenty-eighth?
I thought it was going to be next week.
We're not going to have July twenty-eighth? Okay, I'm sorry. I mean, may amend that?
Well, just, just withdraw it.
All right, I'll withdraw it. What date are we meeting, July?
We're not, we're meeting on fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
But we don't have, we do have a work session on the twenty-eighth, correct?
We have one meeting.
Bob decided he was going to do one meeting in July because of the conference.
Then I think. I mean, I feel like it should be postponed for a work session because we need to dig in and discuss it. And we also need the attorney to review it still, correct?
Yes, we do. And they were. So what date, in August?
Now you're talking, now you're talking August twenty-fifth.
August, August twenty-fifth? Okay. So, you want me to start over?
You withdrew that.
I withdrew my motion and, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I move to postpone, without discussion, the consideration of resolution number 2025-R1 to the City Council Work Session Scheduled for August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right.
I was getting worried.
Yeah. Are there any questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous.
Number fourteen, discussion as it relates to city parking. Now, I open the floor for discussion. And, um, this is a hot subject as far as what we've been talking about recently. It's, um, dealing with one property owner and the courthouse. Property owner had it, said he could put signs up to reserve parking and was told that it was non-enforceable. Now he wants us to enforce. It's really a, a subject that we're going to have to tackle. I'm opening the floor for what are your suggestions, whatever comments that you have as far as we're moving forward. I feel, as a part of council, that we got to be very careful not to single out situations and have a broad determination as far as the laws that's going on in the central business district. We can't, I don't think it's right to do it for individuals as, as to say, for the City of Pickens. Like I said, I'm just one vote, but it's very, I want us to move very cautiously and make sure that the laws are going to be intact, not for one or for some, but for all people that have to park in that area. That's a safe way to go. Instead of tackling this situation individually, would you agree?
Yes, I would agree. We, the, it, it appears to me that the, and I'm not going to get too much into the legal advice because there, I think the property owner is, has already consulted with an attorney. So, but I think the question for council is, is the decision they're being asked to make benefiting of individual property owner or the city as a whole? And your duty is to the city as a whole. And so I think you, within that framework, you have to look at this and what's best for the city and its residents and not an individual property owner. So I, I concur with the mayor's concern about the issue from a kind of forty-thousand-foot view. But I'll also enjoy working on legislative solutions if one can be made to accommodate the city as a whole.
Mr. Mayor, it just, I know I've written, whenever these things are assigned to me, I beat them to death. I know that, I'm sorry. You know what I mean? But I've sent you guys a couple of things. I didn't need to have that grunt over there.
Amen.
I, that's, that's hours of my, well, that's, no, I'm just kidding. Anyway, I did work hard on this, to try to come up with something. And I think that, I know I wrote several things, some of, one is in your agenda packet and one was, I just made an issue rule analysis conclusion. That's sort of the way I went through law school, you know, answering questions. You probably did too. I don't know. But, um, I think that we had three, you know, issues that come up, that have come up. I think we had an attorney meet with us and ask us to give him parking. And I was in favor of that. And, and we have Mr. Crawford, he wants parking, you know what I mean, on that same road? And, um, and then we also know the courthouse wants parking on that same road and that, that road belongs to the city. So, I, I looked up all the laws that I could find on this and you guys can see the rules there. I guess I don't need to read them to you, but they're public trust assets and, um, and they're not for private benefit without formal legal basis. I don't know how we can do that. You know what I mean? If we, I, I just made a conclusion, you know what I mean? And, uh, you know, why don't we pass a resolution to make it into a resolution? Maybe I, I would ask, ask the attorney on that because I had some, I read a couple of different things about whether we should do that or not, but use a resolution or an ordinance to make, convert this into a one-way street and then add angled parking. on, um, both sides of the street instead of just parallel with the street, and designate all the spaces as two-hour parking. We'd have to, um, we could create a one fifteen-minute loading and unloading for Mr. Crawford's B and B, and install signage townwide, or at least down Church Street to start, you know what I mean, to enforce the code that we already have, section 11 dash 30, to enforce our two-hour parking. I think we have to change, as I recall, yeah, I, I think it would, I would be in favor of us making two-hour parking from eight to five, Monday through Friday, not on Saturday or Sunday. And I think our code says seven AM to six PM, Monday through Saturday. So, we would have to amend our ordinance. Um, and then task our new code, code enforcement officer with, with the enforcing of this. We could start with, um, Court Street, and then, um, then we could move on to the rest of the city as, after we experiment with this area, I guess.
Can I ask a question on that point?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, the, so, my understanding originally was that we were only able to discuss this because it was a city-owned street, whereas like Main Street, we can't necessarily discuss enforcing any sort of time limit or anything because it's not a city-owned street, correct?
We, we have the power to regulate.
Their signs are already downtown.
Yes.
There's already downtown.
So, even on Main Street. So, if we were to enforce this two-hour parking, in my opinion, I actually would be in favor of it being on Saturday because I think the turnover in front of several of our hotspots on Main Street on Saturdays would appreciate more of a turnover for two hours.
Especially when you're talking about also the central business district.
Yeah, what I'm telling, yeah. Restaurants, you know, if, if somebody comes and parks in front of a very popular restaurant on Saturday afternoon at eleven and doesn't leave till five, it doesn't really help that business out.
That's true. Yeah.
So, I think, thinking of this as a broader solution versus just, um, for that one particular business owner, property owner, whatever you wanna call it. But as for businesses as a whole, maybe we should start considering it.
Good thoughts. Yeah.
Cause, um, could you re, help us with this, Tim? Cause you were with the, um, meeting that they had with the business owners, and one of the biggest things they were talking about was parking. And what, what, were there any points that they put out? Would you like to share with us this, counsel?
Well, I, I think that that group and, I wish, she had a role, but there were twenty or thirty folks here. It was a very good conversation related to our comprehensive plan. Generally, they, they wanted the city to lean in, um, uh, the alley that we own over by the Village Cafe.
Yeah.
Irwin.
Irwin. There had been, this is a short segment of street. There, there had been conversation in prior years about perhaps, uh, closing that off and making that additional parking. Of course, the county is going to be adding parking right below that, uh, as they do the outfit for the Carolina Investors, um, building, um, and add some parking there. We shared with them the plans to, um, in the budget we just approved, to, uh, improve and add parking to the lot between, um, Domino's and the porkette. Uh, and they were very pleased with that. But generally, they were, um, there were two camps. There was, the central business district did want more turnover in the parking, which a two-hour limit would allow for. And the other camp is unrelated to this, but part of parking is they wanted more on the east side of town. They wanted to extend the desire and the infrastructure for parking.
The east of West?
West, past the amphitheater.
Yeah.
So, but, uh, that doesn't really have bearing on this conversation, but I didn't want those folks that were there to think I didn't hear that.
Yeah, but it has a lot of bearing.
Yeah.
As far as us doing it on the whole, that's for the city of Pickens.
Correct.
That's why I wanted you to bring us that insight and report, because it's helping us get an insight of what our business owners want. Uh, that, as a whole, and I think we can work with them and work with everybody in concern, but I know we can't make that decision tonight. I feel like we can put that as part of the next work session, that we can talk about it along with the,
Resolution.
Resolution that we have put forward.
Mr. Mayor, the only other thing that I would ask to, to consider, for everyone to consider before we bring this up for work session and maybe even get some answers for this, would be enforcement. Because I think it's only gonna help the majority of our business owners if we do do it on a Saturday. So, then is that ordinance, is that new position that we're bringing on and hoping might help with enforcement of this, going to also be working on Saturdays? How, can we just have some ideas on how to enforce this if we were to get, move forward with it citywide?
Mr. Mayor, um, just to address that, that, that's always been a big concern with parking. And I remember seeing, uh, police officers with chalk marking tires. I believe, and that's been part of the reason frankly, that lots of communities, especially smaller communities, haven't enforced parking once they took up the, the meters, which, you know, you could argue their effectiveness. But in this day and time with the, uh, video cameras that we have and with the AI tools that we have, we can actually set up cameras that would monitor downtown and would pinpoint the cars that have been parked for more than two hours. So, I think that there are methods that we could employ.
That sounds very expensive.
No, it's not.
Catching license plate numbers?
I, no, we don't need the, we don't need a license plate scanner. I'm talking about an overview.
But we would still need somebody to then go out to that car and put a ticket.
That's correct.
Yeah.
But right now, we, we would send somebody out, and they'd have to wait out there two hours to see if they needed to get. But basically, you would be able to get, and there would be automatic for our prosecutor, there would be automatic evidence of, well, you were parked here because here's your car.
Gotcha.
It's been there for two hours. I think there, if, the, the biggest nightmare from an administrative standpoint is that we enact something and then don't enforce it, because we, we achieve nothing for our community. But what I'm saying is that I feel like we're at the point where with technology and with the new staffing that we've just added, that we can capably, um, enforce this and make sure that it's just not a hollow, um, kind of a action.
I agree with that. Can, can we use cameras? You know what I mean, for our parking enforcement? I mean, we can't use cameras for speed traps, but we can use cameras to park and force?
Sure, if we, as long as we have a way to, uh, keep the data, we don't, you know.
Yeah. So, we'd have to have somebody watching the ca, the cameras maybe Saturday when they?
Well, they don't have to sit and watch the cameras.
AI, yeah.
AI, yeah.
Yeah, there's some notification.
Okay. Yeah, yeah.
We might be able to hard hire AI for, for enforcement. I don't wanna get into that, y'all. Just kidding.
We might, could use AI for city administrator? Is that what you said?
Yes.
Did I hear that right?
I just.
You didn't say that? Okay. I, I, I stand corrected.
Now, he said McManus. McManus.
Um, Mr. Mayor, let me, while we're talking about this, and I know it's getting later, but, um, let me make sure I understand what was just said, that we don't think that, that we, we think that whatever changes in parking restrictions have to be absolutely uniform. Is that correct?
Yes. It needs to fall within the ordinance.
How does it, that other communities do not have uniform parking restrictions?
I don't know.
Well, you said the word absolutely uniform.
That's what I said, absolutely.
I don't know if I would agree with the word absolutely. What I, my concern initially was the way this issue came before council was from one property owner. And I don't think it's good practice, and I think it presents an issue legally for us to be passing ordinance to benefit a private property owner. And so, if we're going to craft a legislative solution to this, we need to think as the city as a whole. And it sounds to me like there is a parking issue beyond Court Street. And so, let's think what needs to be done citywide or just in the central business district. Or, another option would be, well, do we, we have a ordinance dealing with Main Street already. We just enforce that, and we, or do we create a separate ordinance just dealing with Court Street? Because I remember from our original discussion, Court Street was a bit of an anomaly in that there was one city-owned street in the central business district, and that's Court Street, which is causing all these issues. Because you got the public courthouse, which generates a lot of traffic, and now you have these new businesses, Airbnb and what have you. There could be a legislative fix there, but I don't want us to get into, I don't want this council to get into a situation where they are crafting solution just to benefit one or two private property owners because that could become problematic legally. And, and so, I think tonight's just discussion purposes.
Right, I'm, and I'm discussing.
How do we come up with the best solution to benefit the city?
But we could just make a, we could just say, okay, for Court Street, we're gonna come up with a, a rule about Court Street that just settles the problem on Court Street.
We can make an exception? I mean, is that?
You could, you could, I mean, yeah, I mean, there are, cities have drafted ordinances that deal specifically with just one street, just like we just deal with Main Street. We have a, ordinance to deal with just with Main Street.
Okay, so we don't have a uniform parking restrictions right now? We have, un-uniformed.
City-owned street, we could do that, but you can't have a restriction on state highway.
If I understand what the state ordinance, the state, or the state statute says that the city can control what it does on all streets that are in the city limits. We may not maintain them all, but we can control them all.
We can regulate.
We can regulate them, right?
And parking via ordinance.
We can do what we want, Main Street or otherwise. Okay?
Cause Main Street already has two-hour parking currently up.
Right. So, what?
But that's a slippery slope, and we start, we start granting businesses parking?
This is politics.
I know it is.
I mean, you know.
Where does it stop?
Right, but it's, everyone, there's, there's, there's constant special interest.
Talk about, we got two conversations going.
Yeah.
Let's try to stay on track and see what we're gonna do, uh, as far as this discussion here. Go right ahead.
Well, is, i- is this discussion simply to say that we'll have another discussion? Or are we actually trying to?
Yes, because we can't make that decision without getting all of the data and also a plan together that, uh, Tim can bring us as far as parking in the central business district and Main Street going out to West Main. Is that okay?
Yeah.
And then we will review it and talk about it in work session. We will tailor it. If you feel like there's something need to be added, something's attractive, then we can do that during work session. Okay? Is everybody okay?
I, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So, this is gonna be basically not brought up until the August meeting again, correct?
Right.
Yeah. So, what type of options do, I mean, what do we, I don't exactly know what kind of, what we're trying to, man, I need to come in top with Tim a little bit or something or figure it out cause I don't know, I mean, I don't know what our options are. I mean.
Yeah, I thought we were gonna talk about a little something and I was.
I don't have any idea. I mean, are we gonna make everything two-hour parking, or is that an option? There's an option?
I think we, we, today we got this for discussion. We, we hashed out some things right now, and then we given it to Tim to bring up the options that we can have.
All right.
And then on the 25th, we will talk about those options.
And Tim?
And tailor them if you need to take away, subtract, or whatever it may be.
And Tim will get with Daniel.
Oh, yeah, definitely. Make sure it's legally signed.
So, you can give us some options, what we can do too that are.
No, he's just gonna tell you if the options are legal or not.
He'll deal with the legalities of whatever Tim's doing. As far, and he make sure that we not breaking the law.
And the, and these options, maybe we'll be able to look at them before August?
Absolutely.
Okay, good.
Yeah. We can call, yeah.
I'd like time to look at it.
Cause I, I guess one of my questions is, are we gonna hear from the court? You know we are, but they have no default right to reserve parking unless formally granted by ordinance or agreement. Do you agree with that? I mean, I, that's what the law that I had discovered.
Well, it's a city-owned street.
Right.
Yeah, and so, unless we have granted them some authority I'm unaware of, then we can control how they use that street parking. But we gotta be strategic about it.
Right. And that's, that's the problem, because I think some of the employees of the city are coming out of it, and they're, they're actually moving parking.
Not employees of the city, employees of the court.
Employees of the court. I'm sorry, not the city. Employees of the court.
In this ongoing issue, councilman, council, um, we are aware, and the count, the court administration is aware that there is no existing, uh, intergovernmental agreement on the parking. We have already opened the topic that this council will be considering what, if any, intergovernmental agreement they are ready to enter into with the county, but they're on notice that we're considering how we will move forward.
In my thoughts, we oughta let them use their own parking, do they have like a hundred fifty parking spaces behind the court?
Well, don't say that. Come on. Cause we gotta, we gotta be able to work harmoniously with the county because they're getting ready to have way more parking that we're gonna need. So, maybe we can work out something in a smart way to make sure that we can have access to the parking lot. Cause see, they're gonna have a parking lot from Garvin Street all the way, the whole block, halfway to block until you get, uh, behind, um, open, um, is that open crack? The crack.
Play, full plate.
Full plate, yeah. And then it's, it's full parking. So, I think we need to work with the county as intergovernmental agencies, because we're gonna need them in the future. And we need, we, I wanna work harmoniously with them.
I, I, I want to also, but we gotta work harmoniously with our business owners too.
We're going to, cause you're gonna provide more parking.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
That's, that's almost like a win-win situation.
Are we, well, I guess. That's another issue. The, the parking that we're, we're going to create with that mix of Domino's? Is that gonna happen this year, or is that?
We're hoping.
So, that's not even in the budget, is it? The Domino's Pizza?
Yes, it is.
Parking? It is in the budget? Okay. All right.
Yes, sir.
I've read so many darn things.
You don't know what you proved.
No, I mean, no. All right.
Yeah, you do.
Yeah.
Well, it's lots of, it's lots to know.
Yeah.
It's a lot to know.
Okay. Uh, we, can we wait for Tim to give us some options about this?
I think it would be a great.
All right.
Good idea.
All right, comments from council. Any council members have any comments?
Hey, I have, uh, let me just say, uh, to this council, congratulations. I think it's been well-deserved on working on this, on this budget. My first time through it, but, um, you know, you saw by the minutes that we passed and didn't pass that we spent a lot of time on this budget, and we hashed a lot of issues. And there are always gonna be questions about whether that was the right thing or the right money spent. We trying to cover as much of it as we can, and we just can't always cover everything. It's just, but I think we did a good job.
Yeah.
I give it a, I give it a A minus.
I give you an A.
Mr. Mayor.
Because it's never been this type of working together as a council toward the budget. About normal time, it was just rubber stamp. I mean, you know, budget, and they wouldn't.
Right.
I mean, I'm not talking down, it just, I was part of that.
Yeah.
And, uh, didn't have any kind of leeway at all, but now this, uh, council is really voicing some serious issues to where we not just using it this year, we gonna be abusing it from years on from now. Just like you think you're not being heard because you the only lone person that didn't vote for the budget. But, you are, and it's part of, I mean, I mean, uh, part of the minutes, and maybe it will help us in the future look at things. We're not gonna be perfect, but I thank you all. Thank you all.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may, from the staff perspective, thirty years of watching and being involved in public finance on various different levels, this is the most engaged I've ever seen an elected body. Look at the minutes, look at the number of meetings. And we presented a very different, not worlds different, but a different document when we presented this in May. And then this council, those who were for things, those. And then this council, those who were for things, those that had questions, those that were against certain aspects, played a significant role in really the priorities that came through and the document that we ended up with. And there were days that I probably didn't appreciate it as much as others, but it's been an amazing collaborative process, and it's the way the system's designed. So congratulations to all of you for participating to such a degree.
I, I would like to say, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I, I've been getting some calls and I, I wanna also state this, and I, I was gonna say it anyway before John, you know, got
I would've given the, I said A plus if it weren't for maybe Councilman Rogers's comments.
I would've given an A, A plus, plus. Anyway, I, I think we worked awesome together. I mean, I've had people call and saying that this is, the city's out of control and what in the world are you doing? And I, I really have no idea what they're talking about. I, I've told them, I, I mean, I've had comments about administrator, I, I don't know what world they're living in, and I'm saying this publicly because they're, it's, it's not the same world that we're living in. I mean, I, we're working hard. I spend hours, literally, I, I spent all day to day reading this and maybe, I didn't wanna ask a bunch of questions today because I've already asked questions, like hundreds of them, you know what I mean, about the budget. So I was trying to be quiet today, but I, I really have spent a lot of time, and I know everyone in here has, and I really enjoy working with this council. And, and the administrator is, is awesome. I mean, I, he's always there, he's, he's run the city very well. I mean, I, I was happy to give him a raise, I, I wanted to give him more, and I, I would've if it were just up to me, but I'm just one council member, but I am proud of everybody. And I'm very thankful for this opportunity to serve together with you guys. And I, I just want the city to know that, you know, and I appreciate this opportunity to serve the city. And I think we're, we're getting some awesome things done for you guys, and I'm, I'm really, I'm really happy and proud of the things that we've been able to do. That's what I wanted to share.
All right, thank you so much.
I have one.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a suggestion that our city clerk stay in that seat and separate those two.
Second.
Till, till that seat gets filled.
All right. Thank you.
It, it has been decided, I was talking with Donna earlier, that she said when the, the, the other council member is elected, that I'm actually shifting down.
No, no, not having, no.
That Councilman Rogers and I will actually be right next to each other, comparing notes, you know, talking among ourselves.
I love it.
Murmuring.
That means you run it for reelection.
I just have one, one really quick thing, Mayor. I also wanna congratulate our department heads and all of our city employees on this new budget being passed.
Absolutely.
Because they are truly the bones of this city.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And Jonathan's here and she is here, and I just think now we're getting close as a family to really get some things done. I'm so proud of all of our employees, but I don't think you know the gravity of what you just did this year with the fire fields and the five-year plan. That's gonna help the fire department plan for the equipment they need. It's not gonna put much strain on our general fund. We're gonna be able to plan more things with that. The future is looking real good, and it all comes from a collaborative effort, all of us working together for a common good. Jonathan, I, you just don't know the hours that he spends with Rick and, and, and doing fields and making sure this is done and, and, and getting people in, on the applications for each sport. We love to go to those gang gunners, but it takes a whole lot of effort to make it happen. I preached a sermon, and I'm not gonna preach it, but the subject, the subject of it was enjoying simplicity when nothing is simple. It's not simple. It seems simple, but it's not. It takes a lot of hard work with every department that we have in this city, and especially our council. I've been on council, and I keep repeating that, this is my third term, and I've never had a council more engaged that really want to see something great for the city of Pickens. Not that others didn't, but they did not exercise that. It was always a division, and it was always like this little gulf right in the middle, and most of the time is the ones here was against the ones there, and they weren't gonna do nothing that the ones here wanted, and they were vice versa, it was just a mess. And that's all I've ever served under until now, and I thank you all. We're gonna be able to do some great things.
But now that Councilman Rogers has seen things my way, most of the time, it has worked a lot better. There's going, no question.
Any others?
I'm learning humility.
Mr. Mayor, I think the question that we adjourned.
Can I get a second?
I second it.
It's been probably moving second, let me see your right hands, everybody. It's unanimous.